I would like to call to order the January 5th regular meeting of the Thornton City Council. At this time, I would ask if you wish to join me in standing and saying "Fledge of Allegiance."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, we'll call the roll please.
Mayor Fitz, here.
Councilmember Bass, here.
Councilmember Bishop, here.
Councilmember Allen, present.
Councilmember Lomier, here.
Coram is present, Your Honor.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to start with item number five, approval of agenda. Ms. Jane Smith, are there any changes to the agenda?
May I recommend submit the agenda as submitted, however, on action number five, or actually, action number four, need change under council action item. Instead of 1.1 million, it needs to be changed to 1 million.
And that's on...
Let's see, Colorado Boulevard, extension action item number four. And other than those changes, submit the agenda as submitted.
Okay, are there any changes, Councilwoman? Clerk, please note the correction. The Chair would like to attain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, to hold the council.
Councilmember Bishop, here.
Mayor, may I show the agenda?
And please note, Aaron, Councilmember Aaron Bishop did vote yes.
Councilmember Bass, here.
Item number six is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on a subject which does not later appear on the agenda as a public hearing. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Your Honor.
Buford Buzzer, 4305 East 105th Avenue.
Name and address for the matter?
My name is Buford Buzzer, 4305 East 105th Avenue, Thornton. Honorable Mayor and City Council members, I stand before you today asking your support regarding an issue that has caused a great disturbance in my life. I recently moved here to Thornton. On April 1st of this year, I was served with a summons which, if enforced, will cause me to part with my faithful and beloved pet, Lassie. Lassie is an eight-year-old komodo dragon, which I raised since she was a puppy. Now, due to people's unwarranted fear and prejudice, I'm told that Lassie is an exotic and dangerous animal, which cannot be privately owned within the city limits. I can assure you, ladies and gentlemen of the council, that Lassie is not dangerous. Oh, sure, sometimes when I take him out for his walk, he's been known to look down some prairie dogs and maybe a magpie or two. But anyway, his bite, it can be very poisonous if not treated immediately. But after all, that there is just part of nature's way, ain't it? If you could only see the other side of Lassie, you'd know just how affectionate he really is. Like when he fetches my slippers, or the way he wags his scaly little tail when I scratch his tongue. I know you all have the power to repeal the regulation that threatens to take Lassie from me, and I respectfully request your consideration of the matter.
Okay, Mr. Buzzer, I'm going to ask that the City Manager will be the City Attorney's Office to give you the...
Well, I was hoping you could all press your little button and just vote it on up right now.
That has to be put in, and our honor.
Well, I...
And we'll take it, we have to take it up under a study session first. So if you get with Ms. Jane Smith here, and she's our City Manager, and she can help you set up, maybe if we can, to do that in the future.
I understand, Your Honor. May I make one parting comment? You know, modern man came down from lizards and monkeys and such. If it wasn't for the evolution hasn't it has gone over on all these yawns of years, less Homo sapiens would need to be here. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else?
Marie Parié Paris Maris.
Ms. Bass, can you please state your name and address for the matter?
My name is Marie Parié, and I'm from Paris, France. I am here because I am very unhappy with the policy that you have in the city. I was recently at a restaurant in your city, and I was with friends who do not smoke, and we were sitting in an non-smoking section. But you know, we Parisians all smoke, in fact, I smoke cigars. However, I was not allowed, in fact, when I lit up my cigar, I was asked to leave the establishment, and I was very unhappy. I believe it's very, very inappropriate for you to govern how people spend their time after dinner, or during dinner, as my case may be. And I would ask that you not have non-smoking sessions in restaurants, because I think it is the way of life, especially for visitors. I will not return to this city.
Thank you for your comments and other questions from council. Okay, we will take this, we will look into consideration on this, and we do want you to come back to our study, so we will...
Would you please let me know I leave my address, and I would like to know if you make changes to that policy. As I understand it, there is a group called GASP that wishes that there be absolutely no smoking at all in restaurants. Please let me know.
Okay, well, Ms. Smith, Ms. Jane Smith, we just keep from front on that, and the GASP, and what's going to happen with that?
Sure, sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Buford, Mayor, I do... Butch, 9985 Apple Tree?
It's Butch.
Oh, okay.
Butch, hot. 9985 Apple Tree Lane, Thornton, Colorado, 80221. Yeah, I'm here because I've made numerous complaints about code. As a matter of fact, I had a code violation last year because I had a little rock area next to my garage, and there were some weeds in it. I cleared that out within 12 hours. And I agree with that. I know that the city is looking out for my well-being and the value of my property and such. And I appreciate the fact of what code does, but I called our code enforcement folks, me, and even though my cousin Joyce doesn't like me to, but I call the code enforcement people regularly, and, you know, make this complaint to them about this house on the northeast corner, right by my house. It's on the northeast corner of Paco's and 100. And tell them about cars that are on Jags, chickens in the yard. And the latest thing, if you can believe this, they have a sign in the front yard that says, "Tattoos, we specialize in bumblebees," and dolphins. And I've even written letters to the Supreme Chief of Police, Chief Murphy, and have gotten no response from that. Now, I think that, you know, this is just really hurting the property value in this city and such, and we need to do something about this house on the corner of 100 and Paco's. It's on the, by the way, it's on the northeast corner of 100 and Paco's.
We really appreciate coming on this day. And I would ask that the City Manager, the City Police Chief, to address this matter, and then get back to Ms. Smith. And also give a report back to council. Okay.
Are they bringing the business out of their mall?
Well, there's a big sign in the front yard, "Tattoos for you, we specialize in bumblebees and dolphins."
Okay, so do they actually have people that's, hey, can I say anything?
Well, there's usually about 10, 20 cars out there. Folks park down all sides of the street. And I want to emphasize, this is the house that is on the northeast corner of the intersection of 100 and Paco's.
Is that in our, is that in our city, or is that northwest?
Well, it's a half block from my house. I'm sure you probably know the boundaries better than me.
But we'll contact the clerk for you, and have someone from City Mayor's Office help you with this accident in City Mayor's office.
Do we have any kind of agreements with them as far as, you know, adjoining boundaries and things?
The City Mayor has to talk to Mayor Lassie.
Could you give me his or her name?
Yes, Ms. Jane Smith, can you get that for me?
I'll get it.
Thank you very much.
So, I'm there, and... Now, let me move on to action item number 7A, improving balance between commercial and residential. Chair would like to recognize the City Manager.
Okay, this is action item number A. It's dealing with improving the balance between commercial and residential areas. This item is basically a proposal to conduct a study. And the first person who will be talking about this action item is Mike Vincent.
Mr. Vincent, can you please state your name and address for the matter?
Yes, I'm, my name is Mike Vincent, and I'm the Community Development Director. I have these to the City Council. As was stated, this item is proposing a study to review the balancing between residential and commercial zoning in the areas between where E470 and I-25 meet, and the general area of 136th and 160th. There's also a copy of the map inside the packet. In regards to budget at the time, at the current time, there is not a recommended budget for this project since it is still, it weighs down the road. But if City Council wishes to pursue it, more information can be developed and delivered. The pluses and minuses of pursuing this issue would be, it would allow people to shop near home and also to keep their money inside the city. It would increase revenue available to purchase more open space by potentially promoting the growth of a commercial development, such as a mall or a shopping center. It would increase the revenue that can also be used to build additions on the existing recreation center. The senior center had to build a new recreation center if the need arises. In regards to minuses, it would increase roads, but at the same time, would lead the city to pass reasonable limits to help slow that down. It would create more traffic congestion, which could be balanced out by widening the roads if needed, if and where. It would increase crime, so services would have to be provided, and the police force would probably have to be increased. And it would decrease the open space in the area. But the revenue off generated could also be used to buy more in other areas.
Clerk, please. Are there any questions, Councilmembers?
Can you tell me how much the study is going to cost?
As I said, there isn't exactly an estimated value.
Is that, and does that extend in the entire study?
No. But one can be derived for you if you wish.
Councilmember Bass, are we willing to provide costs in the study?
Yes.
My question is, is that you were trying to get us to approve a study for you, but we don't know how it's going to cost. So is there any way you can get us an amount for that? Because if we want to approve this for you, we need to know that.
Well, we're just initiating the phases for it. We're in the very initial phases to... And right now, the cost has not been determined. But if the council wishes to proceed, we can very quickly come up with a cost.
Mayor? Go on. This is just an approval to do the concept of this study, not necessarily, yes, we're approving that it's going to cost such and such money and such and such time. This is just an approval of, we want to do this study in general, just the concept of a study in general.
Maybe you're saying the study could cost money too, and we can't just approve something if we don't have that money. And we don't know how it's going to cost. If it costs 30,000 dollars, is it going to cost us to do all these things that you're recommending? Is it going to cost us 30,000 dollars? And if we don't have a rough estimate, what's going to cost us?
Again, I believe it's just a concept of doing a study in general. Next, to talk about this item...
I have another question.
Well, Councilmember Bishop?
In here, you know, building at the mall, is there any possibility that it would be infringing on any open space? Or is that in your study, are you going to research any of the infringements upon open space? Or are you providing more for the land that is up with the mall?
Well, the mall would take up open space, because, you know, buildings take land. But it would increase the revenue from sales tax. If we were to go in, the sales taxes would provide more money. And that money could be spent to purchase open space in other areas.
All right, thank you. But our...
And then I can't be saying that we build all the commercial zoning areas?
Yeah.
They don't build any commercial zoning areas.
Somebody say...
Mr. Bishop, any other presentations to present?
Any else who wants to present on this? Yes. We have Zach, Zach Lishard, I think that's how you pronounce it, and he is the Parks and Recreation Commissioner.
Zach Porcher, 2565 East 123rd Avenue. This is covering the policy plan, the comprehensive plan that we just given you. Everything that we've looked at accomplishes some of the ideas that are in the comprehensive plan. One point is to create a community with a stable and diverse economic base, offering excellent employment and business opportunities. This will bring in jobs for all here, for some citizens in the city. So this is basically a rough draft of the survey of how we're going to get people in here and build it. We're going to find all this info out about the police services, the fire services, trash, the sewage, the water. Basically, the survey is going to take place in that area trying to find where the best possible location for this mall will be. We are going to probably offer incentives to bring in the companies, build their mall, if they need want some. And then the cost of most of the surveys and the stuff will be paid through revenues that then brought in by the mall. Here, in first place.
Are there any questions, Councilmembers?
We have a last question, just going to present this subject. Christine Inc., and she is a recreation manager.
You state your name and address for the matter?
Christine Inc., 3124 East 133rd Avenue, Thornton, Colorado. And there are no legal aspects to this. Other cities are either in the progress or have done this. And so, there's nothing that we've got to worry about. Just a recommendation. For this study, we need to decide on the best place for it, for a mall, like between the presented areas of E470, I-25, 136th and 160th Avenue, which the students have been talking about before. We would try to determine the amount of revenue a mall would bring into the city. And we have to do a... Decide the best way to spend the revenue, like with park recreation and other things that need the money for that would, that the mall would help bring into the city. Conduct a traffic study in the area to decide on interchanges in your road. And the map that we have provided, the diamonds are where a proposed interchange is, and that's about where you need the mall. And like road widening, widening the roads around there. And so we have to do a traffic study. And propose like marketing use benefit to businesses so that they would like have incentives to bring their business to Thornton. So, maybe go to the mall.
I have a quick comment for you. To reiterate what I was trying to explain earlier, which I didn't explain very well, is I think what they were trying to say is they just need this to be passed so that they can come back to you a second time and propose an amount for you. Because if you revoke this down now, then they can't even think of the study. But if you approve it, they'll be able to come back with, well, I think it'll cost this, I think it'll cost this. And I was just pointing out that another source said it most likely will not cost more than $100,000 and somebody told me that the other financial situation available to afford it.
Thank you. Do you have any other presentations?
No, no one else is going to present on this subject.
Are there any?
Heidi Monroe, 12253 Dahlia Drive.
Ms. Jane Smith, can you give me your address?
Heidi Monroe, 12253 Dahlia Drive, Thornton, Colorado. I understand that Horizon hasn't been established, but I would like to suggest that the mall's a one-building structure, unlike the new Northland Mall that was like recently built. But I'm a young working adult who has graduated from Horizon High School. I've been working for the past five years, and I'm a registered voter. I am for this item of business because I believe it'll bring more money into the city. I think this mall should also draw people for entertainment as well as shopping. For example, an ice skating rink. Many of the malls in Texas have those, and they're very successful. It will, and this mall will also bring more jobs for young people, like myself. In conclusion, I'd like you to approve this mall and maybe add an ice skating rink or something of that sort as a form of entertainment for the Thornton citizens and other citizens of that map.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything for anyone else?
Lula Bell, 5454 East 114th Place.
Ms. Jane Smith, can you give me your address?
Lula Bell, Lula Bell, 5454 East 114th Place. Like, I understand that like they were probably going to build a mall, but I'm a mother of a high school student at Horizon and has lived, worked, and paid taxes in Thornton my whole life. I'm in favor of a new mall because I'm sick of going to Cherry Creek to shop for my daughter. I support bringing a mall to Thornton because I tried to buy everything in Thornton so Thornton might can benefit from the taxes, like from gas and other clothes, so like not other cities. So if there's a mall in Thornton similar to the Cherry Creek or Park Meadows, Thornton can receive tax money from citizens like of surrounding cities as well as from citizens. Also, the traffic congestion would not be that, like, would not be that big of a problem. If the mall proposal isn't accepted, the housing development will probably will be, which will bring more traffic. So the traffic would already be there anyways, either the mall or the housing. So in conclusion, I would like you to direct staff to change the traffic improvements along with the mall proposal. Thanks.
Is there anyone else? Where is the council's question this time?
I would move to recommend, as actions have to include, to conducting a study to determine the best location for the mall in the area proposed, to conduct a financial analysis to find out how much revenue the mall will bring in, as well as develop a plan in advance for how the revenues will be spent, and to prepare a traffic study to find out about interchanges and road lightings, and to create a marketing program to businesses to show how good a place Thornton is to open shop.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, to hold the council.
Councilmember Bass? First and past, by majority, order one.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to move to action item 7A, new business incentive. Chair, would like to request the...
Okay. Action item number two is here, the new business incentives. Basically, the recommendation is to improve the new business incentive package in order to create jobs for the city of Thornton residents and self-sufficiently supported by taxes. First person to present on this subject is Ms. Elizabeth Cardt Button, and she is an administrative services director.
Ms. Jane, name and address? My name is Elizabeth Cardt Button, and I am administrative services director. The city of Thornton has received complaints from the citizens that we do not provide a utopian society or environment in which citizens may live and work in the same community. And to address these complaints, we would like to make it so that our citizens can live and work in the same community. Recently, a new business entitled as Genetics has been looking for a place to develop a corporation, a new building. We would appreciate it if they would come and have their corporation located in Thornton because they would provide four hundred and fifty new jobs for people in the area, and these jobs would produce salaries of approximately three hundred, or thirty thousand dollars a year, fifty thousand dollars a year, which is a little bit below and a little bit above average of the current salaries in the Thornton area. And about twenty point six percent of the citizens of Thornton have degrees in biological engineering, so it would provide a decent job opportunities for the citizens based on what their backgrounds are, their educational backgrounds. This company would like to set up shop in the building that is currently vacant at one two five zero zero North Washington Street. Uh, we propose that we introduce a perm, that we propose to them an incentive package where they will receive a hundred thousand dollar refund in initial taxes and fees, and we would also like to provide two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in sewer and street lines so that we can put those in.
Are there any questions for the council?
Um, how are you gonna make sure that these four hundred and fifty jobs are gonna go to Thornton?
We cannot make sure that that's something that the company has to look at when they are interviewing. However, we've never made an agreement with them that we could provide them three hundred and fifty thousand dollars refund package if they secure certain jobs for Thornton citizens, because we felt that was unlikely for Thornton to require them to do that.
Okay, Councilor Bremory?
You talked about the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of incentives, and to create four hundred and fifty new jobs, that rounds out to about eight hundred dollars per job. Is it worth it for the city to create those new jobs if they're not going to go to Thornton residents?
The Thornton residents are, on average, approximately sixteen percent more people who have a background in this area, and there's also a community college, Parks Community College in Thornton, which could provide an education for people to work here and at this genetics company. Not only would the company be a corporation where higher-paying jobs could go to Thornton people, but it would encourage people to live, to move here. A lot of people like to live near their jobs, so they move to the city. And also, Thornton residents would most likely apply because they hire attendants of people,
City Attorney?
It is not legal to require the business, that the claimless clause of the Constitution, to only hire residents of Thornton. So there's no way they could ask them to do that.
They couldn't only hire those in Thornton?
It's not legal to do that.
Can I have a question? Um, I, when you were talking, I didn't know if you said this, or maybe there's some clarification. Um, did you say that only twenty percent of people in Thornton have a degree that they need to be...
Yes, there is about twenty point six percent of the people in Thornton have a background in biological engineering.
Yeah, I was just, I was just gonna find that. Are there any questions?
A lot of the positions of the Thornton positions that are available are positions where they can be trained. It doesn't necessarily have to be, um, a bio... Right, they are trained, the positions.
Do you have any further presentations, for example?
Um, yes, we have Ms. Amy Nickle. Sorry if I pronounced that wrong. She is the Economic Development Director.
Please state your name and address.
Um, my name's David Knipperin, Thelone. Um, we just want the city to have this goal of a utopia between citizens can live and work in the same area, not necessarily saying that all Thornton citizens will apply to this job site, but it is available and, um, there are higher-paying jobs for family members to support their kids and send them to college and so forth. So, um, we'd like you to look at this mainly because it brings in a lot of jobs, and within four years, the personal tax will refund the waiver fee of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Are there any further questions? That's what I asked. What exactly are goats and pigs supposed to be used for?
There, it's a genetic laboratory where, well, this is what they've informed us in the meeting, that they do research on pigs, and bacteria to produce. And I think they said in the pigs, they would use, uh, they were trying to develop, um, human organs. They would, like, splice the DNA in pigs to, in order to put a pig or, or human org- organs that were grown in pigs into humans that need them, instead of using, um, people that are on their deathbeds. And, um, the bacteria are used for insulin for diabetes, and, um, the goats are, have the, make the milk, and, uh, dry mothers cannot produce it for their kids. And this is just what they have told us, and this is a research center, so it will not be a warehouse of all these livestock.
Councilor Bremory?
Yes, you said that it would create a utopia, but according to this, it's in this newer neighborhood. What are you gonna do about the people who don't necessarily want pigs and goats living near them?
The goats and the livestock are kept purely inside the building, and they're not allowed out because of, uh, factors outside of the building. So it will not, I don't see it, well, creating a problem.
Councilor Bremory? Where is this genetics company I'm coming from, and have they done this sort of stuff before?
Yes, they're coming from California, and they would like to build their business here, although they've told us that they're looking at other cities, and we would like to have the incentive for them to come and support it. But they have had it in California, and they...
Oh, so... Councilor Fisher?
Okay, you mentioned, um, you know, the reproduction of human organs inside pigs. Is there any legal or ethical, you know, concerns raised with that issue? And if so, you know, how are you going to overcome this by introducing this company into the city of Thornton?
There are some legal and ethical, but the city does a lot of political, well, the city is mainly based off of politics, so, um...
City Attorney's gonna address that question.
Well, the federal government does monitor any biological or bio ways or hazardous ways, and by law, the company will have to report any hazardous materials to the private company.
Um, a question I have, as I'm looking through here, about the cloning, is that legal here in the state? Or...
Also, the ethics code will not be violated, it is a personal choice, so it will not violate the ethical.
Right. Is there any other question?
Okay. You talked about them having to have a, a bio cleanup crew. What exactly does that entail, and how strict are their regulations gonna be?
The bio cleanup crew, let me clarify this, is, uh, mainly for the waste, like, the excrement that the goats and pigs produce, and, um, things like the blood that is taken or the needles, and that is all going to be a separate, separate company that will take all these instruments and dispose of them.
Councilor Bremory?
How much is that also gonna cost? That's gonna be...
That's not, it's gonna be a...
So I would like to make the capsule live, there is no lock until we call it. Right now.
Okay, are there any further questions?
Um, I just need to say that the incentives are done by the state on batteries.
Is there any other presentations?
Um, still no. No, yeah.
What is the council's pleasure?
Um, Madam Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you have Natasha Retcher, one two eight two four, like, one hundred and twenty-eighth Avenue. I'm sorry. Please state your name and address.
Um, my name is Natasha Retcher. My address is one two eight two nine, West one hundred and twenty-eighth Avenue. And I am a wildlife biologist, and I have been the International Group of Animal Ri- Animal Rights Activists. I live on one hundred and twenty-eighth Avenue, close to the Crow Site. I think the business that you want to bring into my community is one that is a negative impact on our children. I do not want our children seeing animals hinged up so they can't learn free. I have the support of my community, my neighbors. My neighbors do not want such a business in our area. Look at other businesses, business options. Job opportunities are not all that great because, believe it or not, all citizens do not have the education it takes to work in a place like that. So my closing statement is, say no to Gen Tech, but not to the idea of bringing more business that would bring more job opportunities to save lives.
Councilor Bremory?
It was my understanding in the presentation that all the animals would be kept inside, out of view from anything?
Can I say one more? It is that all the animals at the business will be inside the building, and no public residents, I say that don't work there, will be allowed. The only people that'll be allowed in there to do the animal testing and to see the animals will be the people that work there, not the everyday public. It's not like a viewing place where they can walk in and see this. It'll be all inside the building, no animals will be outside at all, and the public will not be allowed in the building unless you work there.
But we do thank you for coming today, and we will take everything into consideration. Do you have any other comments?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in your audience that would like to share?
Willian, I'm gonna put this hammer, but, I don't know. One two nine, one two three, like...
Please state your name and address.
Willian Hammerblake. One one two, one two Charlie. My name is Willian Hammerblake, and I am a lawyer from the law firm of Hammerhead. I am here to speak about a business, the new business incentive. Gen Tech's will be moving to one two five zero zero North Washington. There will, um, there will be neighborhoods there that have people of all different ages. And, um, a cloning shopping mart will be, um, right down the street. Think, um, think of all the different religions that will be introduced and hurt to see. I am a member of North Country Church, and I know that cloning, um, cloning anything is very wrong and is basically playing bad. Four hundred and fifty new jobs will be provided for citizens and people. First of all, you will have to be very educated in biology, and this, um, this job would not be something that would be trainable because to, um, to mess up in a gene could mess up the pig or the goat and could kill them. And so we are wondering how many, um, pigs and goats will be accidentally killed or will die because something happened. Who, um, who would like to be, who would like to eat genetically engineered meat? We already have engineered fruit, vegetables, and other, um, food. How do you know that when you eat that meat, it could have something wrong? Say, for example, there's, they find out that the pig and the thing cloning is really good, and it's, maybe it is used for me, or maybe it's not. But even if it did eat something, and then you ate it, and then, like, five weeks later, all of a sudden, this bacteria virus thing grows in your body, and you died of it or something. There can be many possibilities for this. I have a couple pages of votes, um, that I, I first polled, um, a church community, and all of them say that cloning is bad, or they say no. This company should not be a part of Thornton. Shelley Combs stated, Thornton is a very nice city and has better morals than to bring that trash into our homes. I polled another group that was, um, just from a regular Thornton community, and more than eighty-five percent of votes, um, were polled as no. I asked the council to delay the decision of introducing a building to this company, and if, and, um, if you could, totally take this off of the city's plans, because it is a waste. Either of these ideas or proposals to, um, you will not work, um, that, that I ask that out of the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that are used in this, that the city not take any tax money from the, um, residents. And that, that money will be added to that budget. In conclusion, we could introduce much more moral issues and, um, other more successful living, um, occupied than, um, than that, and it can be added to the city and, um, better thoughts.
Yeah, you had mentioned that the possibility of an implant may be perhaps creating a problem in the person. I had a question for the City Attorney. Based upon the FDA's guidelines for things like this, what are their guidelines based upon possibilities of implants from research such as this?
I would need to talk to the company attorney, and that company would be liable for the damages, not the city. All right, is there any... I'm sorry, thank you very much. Do you have any?
Um, just a few things, um, to comment on that. It is, um, a fact that none of the animals died, um, in account of these testings, and none of them died well, and, um, Elizabeth just pointed out that what, what is put back inside of them is referred to as junk DNA. It's, it's not necessarily a bad sound, it's just that they put, um, regular organs back in their bodies, and they're, they're technically not really harmed, except for the health that they've done for the humans. And then, um, and think that there was a comment made that they would be used for food supply, and that no one's going to be eating these animals, they will not be used for food supply.
I just, I had a question for other fans who are not, that are genetic people, um, city manager, or... And how much is the city of Thornton gonna be getting back in actual taxes from this company being evil?
Um, I think Ms. Hugn can answer that. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Could I get a request, if you see?
Um, how much exactly, I don't, I'm just getting this, is the city of Thornton gonna get in taxes from this company being evil? How much sales?
Um, it's not a, uh, commercial business, therefore there is no sales tax. The only thing that we can get is property tax, and we only get approximately ten million dollars in property tax, and that's, in general, about all the property tax that we get, and it wouldn't be just...
Is that per year, or is that offset?
Per year.
Are you really volunteering this?
The revenue that this will generate is that people will buy gas in the area, people will go to dinner and lunch in the area, people will buy things on the way home in the area, and that type of, it's not really a commercial.
Does it, do you guys have any other comments? Ms. James Smith?
Um, can I say that, I think? It's not ten million, it's a hundred thousand.
Per year? So we'll take, so we'll take us approximately, approximately four years to get that money back? That's correct. Thank you. Are there any other questions? What is the council's pleasure?
All right. Madam Mayor, I would move to approve the new business incentive package in order to create jobs for Thornton residents in the city. Madam Mayor, I would move to approve the new business incentive package in order to create jobs for Thornton residents and self-sufficient communities under dark taxes.
Motion fails for lack of second. What is council's pleasure?
I would move the city council move for denial of the new business incentive package.
I second that.
Is there any discussion?
I would like to just say something that I do believe that perhaps it's a worthwhile business elsewhere than, you know, nearby neighborhood where it could cause conflict. And I don't believe that the benefits outweigh the minuses in this case where only a hundred or only four hundred around Thornton, fifty new jobs through the satisfaction of perhaps that neighborhood, which, you know, possibly contains well over that. And I believe that the satisfaction of the neighborhood of citizens well over the four hundred fifty new jobs that it would possibly create greatly outweighs the benefits of those four hundred fifty new jobs.
I would also like to point out that a business such as this that operates with clonings and stuff like that could prompt religious demonstrations in front of the business and cause undue attention.
Are there any further comments? Clerk the pillow, council please. Motion pass. Thank you. Okay, now I want to move to action, item seventy C. The mayor bishop, on the left.
I know, I understand, it was a mistake combined.
So we would like to change the vote for every bishop being voted real and he has proposed the, proposed the motion, so. So we're going to change it to a yes. Is that admissible with you?
Yes.
Now I'm going to move on to action item seventy C, open space acquisition.
This is action item number three, and it deals with the open space acquisition. Basically, they're recommending that the council approve this item because this. This. Just a minute. All this deals with buying have property, property at one hundredth and Washington Street. People who are presenting this, first Brandon Bravat, Brandon Bravat, he is the current planning manager.
Mr. Bravat? No, this way, over this way so we can see the city manager. Please state your name and address.
Brandon Bravat at twenty seven twenty seven hundred and twenty first circle. Basically, we're promoting, promoting to spend approximately four million dollars to buy thirty acres of land, land and his landowners. And his lakes at approximately one hundred, one hundred and Washington. As you can see, the area in the green by the lakes, that's what's, it's a public land dedication. Basically, we'll get the lakes and then where the household areas, when they, landowners move or when they pass away, that will also be dedicated to us. Should be like museums, like a house and some barns and so forth. The area that we're actually proposing to buy is going to be an area located in the black where baseball diamonds are. Currently, right now, we're just going to buy the land, that's all we have funds for. Eventually, the master plan, we're hoping to put a parking lot and parkingly four baseball fields with trails and picnic areas and so forth.
Are there any questions in council? Do you have any other presentations?
Also, addressing the subject is Ms. Melanie Flint, and she is a police captain.
Thank you, Mr. Bravat.
My name is Melanie Flint. I would just like to, oh, sorry, I'm trying to use the mic. Can you please state your address and? Oh, sure. Melanie Flint, my address is fifteen twenty one East one hundred nineteenth Place. I would like to inform you on the positive and negative side of this proposal. The land is, like you said, on approximately one hundredth and Washington Avenue. And it's, it has three lakes that there, right now, there's nothing, it's undeveloped, but it is in danger of being developed if we don't purchase this. It has water, which some people like, it's got a nice land and it has mountain vistas and people usually appreciate the view. It also provides wildlife refuge. The downside is that it uses two thirds of the open space and parks and recreation fund. So, do you see what I mean? There are six million for parks and rec and open space combined. And a third of it goes to each, open space gets a third and parks and rec gets a third and the remaining third goes to either or. So we will be taking all of the open space funds and the third for either or. So that would take all of it for this year and all we will be able to do is purchase the land and we will have to wait for the years until the money comes back to build parks or the baseball fields that we have shown there. Also, there is limited parking around there. It is right behind the Kmart and there, to get into there, there's a small little cul-de-sac in the driveway. And we'll have to build parking lots, which we have up there proposed. And there is also no existing trail connection, which will also have to be added in years to come. We recommend that you approve this proposal because the money has not yet been spent on any other open space. And we feel that this is a good site for the community and it'll strengthen our city. And it's a very lovely area.
Are there any questions in this one?
I was unsure if the area you are deciding to purchase, is it just the area in black or does it contain all three lakes and the housing area as well?
The area we're going to purchase is this area that's outlined in black. And then this, this whole area, this will all be public land dedication. And then when the landowners move or they pass away, we'll also get this as land dedication.
Are there any other questions? Do you have any other presentation? I do have a question.
I do. Melanie Herr Bor.
I'm sorry, before we, before we get into that, I have a question, I think random.